This is a Select Board meeting. Let me start by apologizing to the board because I realize after the flurry of workshops over the last week or so, this is actually a meeting and I should have prepared an agenda and I didn't. So my apologies for that. Really, on the agendas for this meeting, there's typically only one item and that's to make our consensus vote on the budget, which will be a vote for the aggregate expense number, the aggregate revenue number, and a net budget number. And that will then pass the budget along, as we revised it last night, to the Budget Committee for their review next week. And then we'll get it back two weeks hence and have a chance to consider the Budget Committee's input at that time. I sense that there are several issues that people want to talk about a little bit. We have the new numbers from Megan.
On the agenda, I think we do need to talk about what we're going to do in terms of the, you know, whether or not the parking issue is going to be on Monday, based on the venture email that we got, that it doesn't have to go on the warrant.
Right. And Rick and I had talked about that earlier today and we can talk about it now if you like. It was mine, I actually took it off the agenda for Monday, thinking that it would be better to do it, take that second meeting on the 25th, which would be the Monday, two Mondays out where our scheduled second meeting is for the month, if needed, and have that as a one-agenda item meeting because that undoubtedly will have some comment. So that was my thought there. We do have a few things on the agenda for Monday that are going to take a little bit of time. The ambulance review, talk about the policy for allocating costs. What else is on there?
The streetlights.
Streetlight presentation, things like that. So unless there's objection from the board, that seemed like the...
I mean, is the, is the, I mean, I know the streetlight thing is a good thing to think about, but I mean, can that be the thing that's bumped considering we're...
The guy's scheduled to come. There's a guy from the company scheduled to be here, so...
Yeah, and I think that's fine, I think that's fine, Ken, because I think, you know, my reading of the, you know, of Phil's email is that this does not, that the Select Board makes a determination with respect to parking and it does not have to go to the voters. If we want it to go, we can, but we don't have to put it. And that doesn't mean it has to go necessarily in June, as opposed to November. So, I mean, I think we have time.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's all things that we need to talk about at that point.
Right, we can talk about the 25th, you mean.
I have a feeling that once we put the agenda out for that meeting, then we probably won't have a lot of folks in the public here to make comments and inform the board how they feel.
Yep.
That'll be the 25th, which is the Monday meeting.
The second Monday.
And then we have, actually have a meeting on the 26th, which is to review the Budget Committee's recommendations on the budget. And that'll be the next night, that's that Tuesday. You may have to chair that meeting, Deborah. I may not be here for that.
Megan gave us the budget numbers.
Let's go back for just a minute because I was at the Parks Committee meeting today late because I didn't realize it was sort of happening. But I guess I had sort of thought we were going to put this out to the, vote to the public. It was sort of led to believe that that had been our position, that, you know, people that didn't like the parking would be, have a chance to, to vote against this.
And I will advocate for that when we meet on the 25th. I think what Deborah's saying is we don't have to...
Yeah, but the point that, the point that I'm making is that I think a lot of people are sort of expecting to have a vote on it now.
Right, and I support that.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't, I don't mind not having a vote in any way. What I, what I want to make sure that we do is, I don't want to just give, and, and sorry, I don't mean to be inflammatory when I say this, I don't want, and I'm sure that we wouldn't, I don't want to give, you know, short trip lip service to, to the concerns of residents. I want to make sure that all alternatives are considered. I mean, I know Jeff and me, and I can't speak for Jeff, but I've never had the opportunity to sit on this floor and see the alternatives. I know that, you know, it's been, they've been rejected by some library committees and some, you know, and some others, but this board, because it's never had an official vote on it, and certainly this Select Board, has never voted on parking alternatives. And I don't want to just vote on, vote something down without being able to say, hey, I think this is what we ought to do. So I think that artificially say that that has to take place, and I'm not suggesting you're saying that, Doug, but to artificially say that has to be on, say, the June ballot, as opposed to November ballot, since we're not even doing the parking until the following fiscal year, I'm not so sure that that makes sense. You know, to develop sound alternatives might take some time. I mean, my God, look how much time the building has taken. So, you know, so that's, that's what I'm thinking. And I don't have, I'm not philosophically opposed to taking it to the voters in any way. I'm, Phil, I'm just opposed to rushing the process. That's all.
What, what's our expectation on the 25th in terms of presenting all the different alternatives that are out there? Do we want to go back to the REED plan, which I think was pretty roundly, I mean, I think, I tell you the truth, I think what it's going to come down to is probably parallel parking versus perpendicular parking. That seems to be where people are coming from that have strong feelings about it.
I, I agree with that observation, but I also know that there was, you know, there were these plans that were out there in terms of, you know, potentially having something on the other side of the park. And I know in watching the live streams, Ben didn't like it because people had to walk too far. Well, you know, this is a walking community and my God, you know, some of those 14 spaces were a long way, too. So I, I feel like that wasn't, you know, necessarily, it's certainly not a response that I would have depended, you know, that I would have relied on. So I have never seen, and I hear that, you know, Will Gartley sits here and says that the, that provided for completely flat parking. Well, let's see a rendering of it. Is there a rendering out there? I'd love to see it. I've never seen it.
Maybe we could do this for the 25th. We put it on the agenda item as to discuss parking, either, either show the current proposal and invite feedback, or, and then see what we get, right? That will then lead us to public input that will say, alternatives, yes or no? And I think from there, then we can start walking it down the path of getting the alternatives developed, having additional public forums to look at the alternatives, getting plenty of input. At that point, there will be, there'll be a point in time where we can then say, all right, we've heard the input and we can make a recommendation to go to ballot on option A or option B.
Or, or we make a decision as board.
Or we, that's, I mean, that's the option as well.
Well, I mean, I, I will advocate for having the voters have a say in it because that's what I said all along. My, my original thought, the plan was it was going to go in the budget and that would be the people's chance to vote yea or nay on, on the plan.
I know, I know in the past, there has been requests from residents that have lived up there to consider it to be one way. So that would be another option.
It's an option to consider, yeah. Quite honestly, I don't think that's a determination that has to be made. Now, that determination can be made in three years.
No, but I'm just saying, there are other, there are other things out there that people have talked about that we, I don't...
Let's, let's do this for the 25th.
I don't want to get too deep into it now.
No, but float the, float the current proposal out there and say, this is what is currently on paper for this, and then we stay quiet, except for Ken, who says, two minutes, two minutes, two minutes. And we, and we get the input that we need. From there, we will be able to determine a direction.
Yeah. The, all right, yeah, I, I think that's fine. I think that's a good idea. I do have a certain level of frustration, just because each one of us on this board has sort of little different areas of expertise. You know, Ken is certainly the, the historical keeper of the facts and has a good institutional memory. Deb, you're great on policies procedure. Jeff, and broadband. You know, Jeff, you're on kind of the human resources and stuff. And, you know, Ken and I, again, have spent a lot of time...
He didn't mention me. I'll just bring that up.
Just a general all-around pain in the ass.
Thank you.
Deborah, we're live on the live stream, yeah.
You know, and Ken and I have been working on this library thing for a long time. And that's not to say that, you know, our answer should be the final answer. But we've been through a lot of this discussion about, you know, what are the pros and cons of this and that? And so, you know, when it comes to broadband, I'm going to be a little bit deferential to you. I'm not going to cave. And, you know, the same thing with, with Jeff and human resources and stuff. But it's a little frustrating that it's like Groundhog Day for some of us that have been, been doing this process for a while. I get it, we're all equal. You guys are new, need to come up to speed, but...
But I take umbrage with that because I, I am a resident in the neighborhood and I've been waiting to have my say on the parking. I've thought that the parking was wrong all along, but I never felt that I ever had the opportunity to do that because, as, as I, as I noted in what I sent to you guys, it was always, it's not set in stone, it's not set in stone until it was set in stone. And, and that's, and my frustration is reflected by a lot of people in the community.
Let's, let's move on to budget. We'll save this discussion for the 25th. We can sit here all night and not, not fumble as much. Okay. As I started to say a few times, Megan provided us a sheet with all the changes that we went through last night and our net budget and just before the meeting. And the one thing that's not included on this sheet, we talked about it a little bit before we were on air, but we'll repeat it again, is that the number for the hydrant rental came in from Main Water and it came in approximately $20,000 lower than what was in the budget. I think that's about right. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't need the exact number, as long as I'm not wildly off, that's fine. And in any event, so right now, we have a, as it stands now, based on what we did last night, we have a net, net budget of $4,150,932. The LD1 numbers, and I'm going to ask for some help from Rick or Megan on the LD1 numbers because there's one number without the bond, the library bond payment, which is $4,64,180. So using that number, we're above it by something less than $100,000. If you use the LD number with, including the bond, it's $4,168,000 and some change. And so we're actually below that number if you use that. So if you guys could enlighten me again about what that means with and without the bond and...
The thinking with the bond is the voters voted that bond through. And if you, if you don't include that in the LD1 calculation, that means that we'd actually be, you know, we'd be coming back with having to reduce the budget below or close to what we had last year for, for expenditures. So it, it eats up most of the, the growth factor we have. We had a growth, growth that allowed us how much in the budget. It would all gotten eaten up with the increased cost of what the, the library bond was. So you put the library bond as part of the LD1 calculation because that's what the voters voted on in November.
And that's, that's okay. So if we, if we include the library bond, do we, and we have the numbers we have right now, would we have to vote for an override of LD1 or no?
You would. I would still vote for the...
You'd still have to do that.
And I'll, and I'll make this pitch again, that I want that at the beginning of the warrant.
Right, and I did check with town council and he said you can put it wherever you want and the beginning is just fine.
So in round numbers, the bond is costing us $104,000 a year.
So our growth only allowed for $127,000 of the growth. So the bond payment would have eaten up that amount.
Okay. So I guess that's, I don't know.
Most of that.
Last year's budget, again, remind me, was?
Was $3,937,165.
So if we use this $4,168 number, which includes the bond for LD1, our net budget is currently below that at the $4,150, but we would still have to vote to override LD1 because the real LD1 number is the $4,64,000.
How much do we have to peel out to not have to do that? $101,000?
No, it's, no, it's less than that. It's not, 86, 96? No, 86.
86?
To meet that LD1 number. So I guess...
You're, you're going to be chasing that, that prob, you're going to chase that problem every year, you know?
Well, that's... Or we reduce the overall cost of operation by the amount that the library bond cost in order to maintain flat.
Yeah, you'd have that option, yeah.
Well, I mean, that, that goes back to, and I'm not really a good numbers person to be saying that, but it's like every year, we build our budget based on the net from the year before, I mean, the gross from the year, the net from the year before. And we all know that next year, we got a lot of one-ogs in this one that won't be there, so...
So if we, if we vote to override LD1 this year and we have a net budget just for the sake of argument of the $4,150,000, is that what we begin as for our LD1 calculation next year?
And that's...
I mean, the board could certainly elect to have a number provided that's something less than that if they want.
Right, but the question is, you know, if, so I think Rick's point there is that if we, if we vote to override this year, but keep it below the number with the bond included, then that's where we start from next year. We have an easier time next year of not having to go over LD1. Whereas if we, if we make $86,000 worth of cuts here to get down to the LD1 number without the bond, then we're starting from that next year and may have to make the same painful cuts again, so...
Just for simple math, I'm looking at a budget currently, the 4.15 million over the 3.94 of 213 round numbers, 214,000 over last year's budget.
Right.
Okay? Last year's budget was 3.937, we're at 214. And that gets you up to the 41, 4.15.
It's an increase of 5.4%.
The 214 is 5.4%?
Right. And of that 213, half of it is the bond payment.
All right, the bond payment, we said, was 104. So you're talking around, round numbers, 210,000 to get, I'm sorry, 110,000 to get flat with last year's expenses.
Right.
To get flat with last year's...
I'm saying to keep flat. That, that doesn't, and we're saying that the LD, right, and the LD, what was the, what round numbers, what's the percent increase of LD1 over prior year? 3%? Something like that?
Well, it depends on, but the, the number is $4,64,000.
The growth factor was 1.03%.
1.03%?
Yeah.
You know, keep in mind that pretty much LD1 is a, is an arbitrary number that's, you know, it's a target that you guys set for me, which, you know, we got to, but it is a, it is an arbitrary number that really has no, no enforcement any longer, no place any longer at the state level. Even the state economist says it's a, it's a condition that's outlived its usefulness. But it is what our...
It's the law, though. If we have to, if we're going to exceed it, we have to have a vote to exceed it.
You have to vote to exceed it.
You know, we're, we're looking at an increase of 5.4% over last year's budget. The 41, 4.15 million's 5.4% over, correct?
I'll trust your calculation.
No.
The challenge is that, you know, when you vote for the library bond, you don't vote for the library bond with the idea that it means you're going to have to cut services in the town's budget. You know, that's, that's what we're facing.
Unless you can find an opportunity to do so.
Right. So I guess that's, the question is, what does the board want to do about these two LD1 numbers? Do we want to shoot for the one without the bond, which would require us to cut 86,000 from what we have right now as we ended last night? Or do we want to take it, the number with the bond and go for the override, which is totally the bond payment?
Well, excuse me. I mean, you know, it was nice to be able to pull 150 and help this out, but as we stated last night, some of us, and I think Doug might have even alluded to it, we're still not taking care of some of the things that have been put off for years. So I'm a little concerned about that still.
Well, and we have at our disposal, we have that use of the UFB, which last night we talked about. And that's, in this budget, the budget numbers that Megan has given us, that assumed a use of the UFB of 150,000.
Right, but I...
So we, if we wanted to, we could do more than that.
Well, and that's, and that's part of what I'm saying. I mean, it was easy to find that, to do the 150 to help things out. But why haven't we in the past couple of years saying, hey, let's take 100 to take care of Walker Park Seawall? I mean, that would be an easy thing that we could do without having a lot of rigmarole. And that's just...
Well, again, it comes back to where do you want to land with the LD1? If you want to land on the LD1 without the bond, we've got to cut 86,000 out of what we got now. And, and I don't know, I don't know how much more the board is willing. I mean, I'm willing to go up a little bit on the use of the UFB, but not that much because I want to make some progress toward what the auditor has told us we should have.
Current level, we're at what? How many days? 45?
Almost 60.
60?
If you take out the 150, it puts us...
It says 55 days, where in your memo from the other day. We take out 150, it puts us at 55.
If we use 150 in our expenses, it takes us down to 55 days.
Right.
So that's not making progress in the...
I think the, the number that I did from a few meetings back was 161,911, if we took it back to 55 days, based on the current number that Megan gave us on whatever day that memo was.
And our target again, Megan, is how many days? Six months?
Uh, the highest is 90 days.
90 days, yeah.
They said they'd like to see us between 75 and 80.
And on another note...
75 and 80? Your voice trailed off, sorry.
Sorry, 75 and 80.
But the other thing, I mean, we're at 60 days right now, but I think the comparison is not what we are right now. Because obviously, if we take money out right now, it's going to go down. But the comparison we need to make is where were we at the end of last year's fiscal year as far as how much we had? And I don't know that number off the top of my mind.
It's on...
No, that's current.
That's what, I'm working off the current, not what we were...
Right, but what, my point is...
That is the end of 2018.
Right.
So, and there again, you know, this, I understand the need for it. It was recommended by the auditor and I don't, I don't have a problem, but, you know, we're, I think we have the ability to use that to offset some of our projects beyond something that's currently being built.
How much did we put in last year in the UFB? Remember?
Uh, last night I was...
Mark, a lot of our discussion last night...
We got a lot higher than that, but we found the error too.
Oh, that's right.
A lot of our discussion last night, too, though, was predicated on doing a bond, which will take care of a lot of these issues. Not immediately, obviously, but at least there's some light on the horizon.
Yeah, and with regards to the Walker Park Seawall, we put the money in last night for the engineering study. And until we have the engineering study, we don't really know what that expense is going to be. So it's kind of hard to...
Well, it's true. But if you, if you had 100, you put it in there, you get the information, or not, you can encumber it into the next year.
Do you want to dip a little more into the UFB, sort of, as just...
Well, you know, because I really don't have a lot of faith that there'll be a bond prepared right away. I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, we've, we've talked about it last year even, I think, about pulling that together, I think. And nothing materialized, so...
Well, this, it goes back to kind of my opening statement when this whole very process began. And, and basically, the concept is, is that, you know, we're a small part of the overall tax bill that this town pays out. And we've tried to keep it down as hard as we can. There's no question about that, at least on our municipal budget. But I think it's come at the cost of our infrastructure. And, you know, the town voted to, to pay for the schools and to pay for the MET building and, you know, the fact of the matter is, we have to keep our own town infrastructure up. And it's going to mean having to spend some money on it. Everybody complains about taxes, but, you know, when push comes to shove, we sort of have an obligation to do that. And, you know, until the people arrive with pitchforks and tumbrils, you know...
And I wouldn't disagree with that. But I, you know, I think the money we're putting back, and I, again, will say, I understand the auditor wants us to be at a certain level. And I understand that we, if, if the need arose, we may not have enough currently to, to meet our obligations. But, you know, you know, the difference between going back to 55 and 50 is either 161,000 or 387. And that's still going to leave us 20 days ahead of where the current charter says we are, have to be. I mean, so we're still, we're not going right back to zero at 30 days. We're still leaving some in there and we have a trend of always putting some back in every year.
What was the auditor's estimate, Megan, as to what we were going to return to the UFB?
For what?
The latest estimate he had, we were returning, what did we return to the UFB last year?
It was less than 10,000.
10,000?
So the 2.643 is what is at the end of 2018, which is the one we just did the auditor for, that was the amount.
Right. And that included a deposit of less than 10,000? Okay, so that wasn't the 600,000 that he told us.
No, because we found it in...
Okay. So we didn't put that much back in last year?
I think Mark and I are sort of arguing for increasing of that over.
I mean, it's taxpayers' money that's going back in. So, I mean, we're, yes, it's, no, go ahead.
Is that because it's... We're concerned that we can't put a bond together to cover some of the stuff. I mean, that's...
No, I mean, I think, you know, we could do it tomorrow. We're the Select Board.
Right. Because I'm looking at the stuff I think we're most frustrated about is the stuff that has a long life. And, you know, a lot of stuff is moved and a large price tag. And maybe the best way to do it, just a proposal, the best way to do it is put together a bond for however many hundred thousand dollars and say, voters? Yes or no?
Well, that's true. I mean, it turns it over to them and not so much to us.
And we, and we did that, what was it, five or six years ago now? We had the infrastructure bond that was about a million and a half, which included some work, were two separate bonds, actually, because this one wasn't tax exempt for this building, but included some serious work for this building. It included the Mill Street Bridge, which was a half million dollar project that had been put off for a long time. It included the high sidewalk. It included some public work stuff, this school street and summer street, and it included, what am I forgetting? West Rockport Fire Station.
You could tackle stuff there. And then when you offer the yes or no on the bond, you're going to clearly state what the impact is to the tax rate.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all right in front, the, the information is there, people can decide, yes or no, do I want to accept that level of increase or not?
And that infrastructure bond passed by a margin that astounded me.
Yeah, it was pretty high.
Tom? Want to say something?
The thing that I thought about when I was on the Select Board and this Select Board and future Select Boards need to consider is, what level of service do we want to have for our taxpayers? Do we want to go open eyes into saying, we're going to run our infrastructure and plowing in everything the way Rockland does, like Appleton does, like any other town that is allowing their infrastructure to decline and letting the level of service decline? Or do we say that we are a relatively low-off community and we want our roads in B-plus condition and we want them plowed to the B-plus condition? Or we want them to be A-plus? If you want the services, if you want the infrastructure, you want to keep it up, you're going to have to pay for it. And you can pay for it now, or you can pay two and a half times as much in the future, or just not do it at all, just let it go.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely true. And I guess...
But the Select Board has to make a conscious decision. We are going to go for B-plus service.
Well, let me just, I, I think that's absolutely right. And I guess the thing that troubles me as a Select Board member, it sort of makes me, again, feel backed into a corner simply because of the other, of the other taxes that we've been...
Every time. That's what you were elected to do. I was on the losing side every time.
Now I feel better.
But here we are, we're still trying to recover from.
Yeah.
That's where I like the idea of a bond because the information is clear. This is exactly what we're going to do for this much money. This is how much impact it's going to have on your taxes. This is the best we put together based on the priorities, the feedback, and everything else. It's all out there, and then people can say yes or no.
And I think what, what made the bond successful la, or contributed to making it successful the last time, I think, is that we had projects that were all over town. It wasn't all concentrated in one area. We looked all around the town. And, uh, and like I say, I, I would, I would have been happy with a 55, 45, and I think that thing passed by 70%.
And once we, and once we get the mess, I'll call it, because it's been there forever. Once we get it cleaned up to a point that's more manageable, then we can appropriately budget for things.
Well, and I think, I mean, you gotta, I gotta be honest with you. You're, and I won't be on the board when you put this bond together, but you're going to have to make decisions about what to put on that bond. And you can't put everything on it, otherwise the price tag gets too big. That's the same dilemma we had the last time, is like, we, we had to sort of pick and choose what we wanted to put on there. And those are decisions that this board has to make, and you'll have to decide, you know, what's the most important thing.
This might be a good... Sorry, what was the number last night that she told us? I thought it was around 1.5.
See, this might be a good time to have Megan and Rick just review with us our long-term debt and...
But if I could, but just before we do that, I mean, because I look at this number, and I look at what increase LD1 will let us have. And I can tell you, any project, uh, darn near tips us over LD1 every year.
Right, yeah.
We got a $150,000 project, all things being equal, we've already tipped over LD1.
Welcome to the club.
So, it, we will, as you say, have this battle every year unless we do something significant to move the needle forward.
We are way under where our debt should be.
If you look at page 247, the blue box in the middle, the top part of that blue box outlines what our max allowable debt is according to state statute. What our current level of debt is and the percentage of the, what we're allowed, what we're at. So we're at 7.75% of our allowable debt that's issued by, that's set by state statute.
There, there is no way that I would be recommending we come even close to our max allowable debt.
No, that's, that becomes a burden that's...
That's just way, you know...
We're seven percent of it.
You know, I made the point too before, though, that, you know, people could accuse us of being fiscally irresponsible for not taking out a bond at a low interest rate before things go up.
And that was, that was one of the arguments for the last bond, which was even cheaper then than it is now.
I made, I made notes last night on some of the things that we talked about putting on as a bond. One of them was mild pleasant for around 500-plus thousand. Townwide sidewalks, from Mike's estimates. The lime kiln project, the tennis courts, and the columbarium.
We must walk the park seawall. Seawall, we got to do that seawall.
And the columbarium.
Yeah, the columbarium, yeah.
Those things are good things for, I think, in terms of piling into a bond. It sounds like a nice and balanced bond package. Would you take this for everybody in on?
Do you think so?
You know, we got to...
That's how it passed so wholeheartedly last year.
And we got to get it done, I mean, I just...
It's good to know that that strikes you as...
But keep in mind too, that that does add a hundred thousand dollar bond payment.
It does, but it, it...
And I'm not, I'm not arguing against it, but...
It adds another hundred thousand dollars on top of the 104,000 dollars that we already have on top of the past bonds that we have. But at least, everybody sees it, they know it, they can make a choice.
And it's money well spent.
And didn't, and didn't, and didn't somebody say, um, isn't the CSD payment going away in two years?
That's not going to have a major impact, because the debt payment is funded largely by the state subsidy that we get. So the state, I don't know what the percentages are, but the state subsidy that we get currently will go down when that debt retires.
You type a dollar off the top here and...
Off the SGC at the school district, but I know a large portion of that is funded by the state.
Fall off the wash. I mean, it will help some, but...
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking of things...
But the, you know, the idea with the bond, you know, the advantage of a bond is that you're allowing people that are moving in in the future to pay for that piece. And then you're also, any growth that we have, you know, will help reduce the impact of that bond as we move into the coming years. If, you know, with develop, with further development, further growth, that, you know, it makes it less available for us in the future because it'll be going to pay the bond payment, but it...
But then we have the projects done.
But, but you have the projects done.
Tom want to say something?
One of the things this select board could do, send a certainly word letter to our representatives in Augusta, saying that we would very much like to have our fair share of school support and revenue sharing again, because the decline in our schools, the decline in infrastructure, and a lot of the money that we're seeing flowing out of our property taxes is because the state's not paying their fair share by law. So we can argue about LD1 being all we want, whether we're not as fiscally responsible or not, but the state's not keeping up their end of the bargain either. So we're exceeding LD1 because they're not paying for what they need to pay.
Well, and I know that when, input to the LPC at the Maine Municipal Association from this board this year was highly focused on revenue sharing because it was achievable with the new administration, to get some improvement there.
To Tom's point, you know, we ought to, we, we ought to do that. I mean, if, if they don't hear it from the towns, then we ought to, you know, MMA is great, but we ought to be sending pressure to...
Without a press release?
Yeah.
But that goes to the three support effort that's happening right now to increase that school funding.
Oh, yeah.
I believe they've come to you, I know that Camden's, there is legislation that's moving forward now to increase that minimum receivership level up to something that's a little more reasonable, which would mean millions, I think, going into this school.
Right. Well, let's get back to where we want to land with respect to this LD1, because that determines whether we have to cut stuff this evening or whether we can add stuff back in.
Can I make one observation? When I, I, I mean, I know that there were some things there that were sort of light yellow, as we joked about it last night. But when I go through here, in all honesty, I, I don't think there is $86,000 worth of things that I'd like to see us cut.
It would be painful.
Yeah, I mean, I may not, I may not, you know, feel as strongly about the columbarium, for example, as you do, or, you know, whatever. But I, but it still doesn't get us to the 86,000, and I, I don't, I don't think that I want to get to the 86,000.
I mean, I, I looked at some of the stuff. I picked out five things. Four of them were reserves. And I didn't, I just took a number of 10% off of those reserves. And the other one was the overtime line, and lowered it by 5,500. And I almost, it was like 14,500. It is little change, but still, you're leaving a reserve, you're leaving the majority of the overtime, and you're nipping away at things. It isn't much, but it's a, that takes...
Out of here, 14,000 out of here, these things here?
I went through some of the stuff we talked about as I marked them off in...
By overtime, you're talking about the police overtime?
Right, from 43, 43 down to, 43.5 down to 38. You know, and you had talked about lowering it to 40.
What do people think about that?
Well, I thought we, we, I thought that we took from the, I thought we decided to do the training and stuff instead of the overtime. You know, to take out a reserve for that training.
Yeah, we used the reserve account to pay for the training. We offset that.
We decided to do that, well, preliminarily, obviously, we decided to do that instead of the overtime.
Right. I guess where I am on this, Ken, is at this point in the process, we could spend hours doing hundred-dollar, 500-dollar, this, that, and the other thing. Or we could say, all right, Budget Committee, they still have a swag at it, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, we get the feedback from there as well. I, I just, you know, trying to find $86,000 down out of 4.15 million. I understand it's real money, but, uh...
Well, I think, I, to your point, I think we worked pretty hard on this last night.
We'd be, we'd be peeling 1,000 here and 500 there, and in the end, the money, it's not going to be the actual spend. You know, the town manager and the town organizations still have the responsible, responsibility of not spending any more than they need to.
Right. So I'm hearing from a couple of people that they're okay with a 4,168 LD1 number and having, having an override vote, basically, to cover the library bond.
With the fact that the library bond is 104,000 of that, uh, you know, we're only talking, we're, I don't say only, it's all big money. Of course, after the last few nights, it starts to, you start to pop around numbers, you get too comfortable at it. But we're 214, we're 214,000 dollars over last year's budget currently.
Right.
Right? 104 of that is the library bond. So in essence, we, we bumped our cost increases. Our expenses went up 110,000 dollars. Now, if you do the math just on the salaries and 3% increase, you've, and the benefits, that could already be half of that. So, uh, to say 50,000 dollars is too much to go up over last year's budget, I, not at this point.
Jeff has his hand up.
As an individual, you have a position on the Budget Committee, individually, I feel that the LD1 is, is not an appropriate number to pay that much attention to. But because it is long, the interesting thing is what you're struggling at with is to get underneath this when, in fact, a dollar over forces the same vote. So it's an opportunity, I think, at town meeting and prior to that. Because the biggest challenge that this board has, and any of the boards, is that we all do as much homework as we possibly can, but there's a whole remainder of the community that looks to us for leadership. Plus, they have an internal switch that says, Josh, I just don't like you going over that much or whatever it is. But I would submit to you that a reaction to an LD1 vote, if unprepared by the knowledge that the board has, is an emotional reaction. If it becomes a logical reaction because of, of efforts that you've made prior to the town meeting to say, this is the situation we're in. You know, the library de facto added 104, the remainder is not all that much, LD1 has had its time. And then you, you, you downplay through education this dam, sort of, Damocles that's hanging over you that you may be spending slightly more than, than enough time with.
Right, because if you look at this, again, to me, you take out the bond, our cost, uh, based on our budget is about 2.5% plus or minus over last year's budget. That's the increase.
You know, and I, I, I think of, sorry, just, you know, I think of people that have, that I've talked to along the way that are more than capable of paying their taxes, but when they go up from seven, and I realize that we're a small portion of it. But when they go up from 7,000 to 21,000 in 10 years, and they have no additional services to show for that, those are people that can, that, they complain, but they can pay for it. So think of the people that aren't as well-off, that's, you know, and that's what we're here arguing about tonight, is probably more for them than...
Tom?
For a decade, I was one of those people living in this town who could barely afford my taxes. And I turned things around and made things better for me. And not everybody has that opportunity. But the interesting thing is, is that when LD1 was needed, we never exceeded it. But when we lost the valuation, we've exceeded it every time. I think that...
Except for one year, we didn't exceed it last year.
But, well, you know what I mean. But this, but this has been a discussion ever since our valuation has gone down.
Right.
I think that it is time for the board to take a leadership position. And echoing what Jeff said is that do some education about why LD1 is what it is, what it means and what it doesn't mean, what our valuation has had happen to it, and the fact that we are in an economy that is upside down from what LD1 envisioned. And we're going to fight about this every year. I think the board should take leadership position and say, we should permanently exceed LD1 so we don't go through this over and over and over and over again, because you're making poor choices. I was on a board that made poor choices. We are, we, we live in a mansion, and we're allowing everything in the building to fail. It still looks good, but it's going to become unlivable. Is that what we want? I think that it's time for a vote to permanently exceed LD1 and have a budget that reflects the needs of Rockport, and spend the money where we need to spend it, and be fiscally conservative instead of penny wise and pound foolish.
Here, here. Well, I think, um, part of our education piece is, is going to have to let people know that how hard this board and Rick and Megan worked on this budget. And the fact that, you know, we had a lot of very worthy proposals across the board that, that we had to say no to. And that's, that's not easy. We sit up here, we get all these good ideas, say, this is, this is a good idea, it'd be great, it would help the town, and all this stuff. We have to say, sorry, we can't do it. And so the people have to understand that what we've left in the budget is what we really think is the important stuff.
It's the important stuff.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
I, sorry. I, I think that, I think that Tom's point about the educating people about LD1 and how, you know, it's upside down from the original purpose of LD1 is a really good idea. And that that's a, you know, great opportunity to do that at the town meeting. And then I think that we have some good stories to tell, to your point, that, you know, we had to cut a lot of stuff that, you know, people would have liked to have seen, et cetera, et cetera. But we also have, you know, some good stories about, you know, the pathway reserve. I mean, we put the, we've got the money in there for that, for the pathway, which a lot of people will support. And it's crazy for us not to do it, because then we lose 80% of state funding if we don't have it in there, you know? Um, that, another thing is the Opera House. We have to preserve this building, and so we've got that in there, and, um, you know...
Well, we don't have to, but if we choose to let it go, we need to do it consciously.
Yeah, right. And the, and the $8,000 for the seawall engineering, you know, to educate them about the fact that we've got a real problem at the seawall. And this isn't to fix the seawall, this is just to figure out how much it's going to cost. So, I mean, I think there's a really good spin on, that you can, you can...
I think there's a, I think you're right. There's a good story really, every budget line. We spent a lot of time last night.
We left 285,000 dollars in there to do road maintenance and repair.
We didn't leave it in, we put it back in.
We put it back in.
Put it back in, right.
We didn't accept the idea that we couldn't not, we couldn't not do that.
And that was because we said we're not going to let the roads go.
You gave the idea.
Well, we, Alex will be there to tell us where, where we missed.
Yeah, well, yeah, and that's, I miss him dearly. So what do we want to, I'm sensing from the board that the board is kind of okay with the budget we have. Do we want to make any adjustments to it, up or down? I know Mark had talked about possibly, I mean, we could talk about grabbing some more money from the UFP if you want to. I, I have a limit as to what I would like to do for that, and, and do we want to pick off another infrastructure project or two? Or do we want to, I don't know, go with what we've got? Quite honestly, given where we started, I think we have a pretty good package.
I'd, I'd sort of like to revisit, um, the finance office if we could. I was just a little uncomfortable after the meeting last night, so let's find out where we are here.
It's 122.
Hmm?
122.
122, yeah, there it is. You know, Jeff, when you first came on the board, one of the first things you said is, we really need to look after our people. I mean, that, you know, that's town government good. And, uh, although we can't talk about specific people and whatnot, you know, I think if you have an employee who's working on a college degree in her field, that she's working on in the town office, I think it somehow requires some recognition on our part. Again, it's not just doing more responsibility, but she's, you know, actually pursuing a degree. And, you know, we were kind of giving out stipends left and right and, uh, and whatnot. And I sort of wonder if there isn't some creative way that we might be able to recognize this employee sort of going above and beyond, you know, either a college stipend like Megan had when she was in college, or something.
Speaking of which, you know, and that did raise a, a thought for me last night. When we, you know, we automatically gave our cleaning service 3% without even a request for them for an increase. So that's not an employee, so how do we manage to give them 3%? I know we appreciate their work, but...
Well, I think the 3% we gave them was lower than the budget request.
Well, I understand that, but they're not an employee. They're somebody we contract with who didn't give us a bill.
I want to go back, we can talk about that later, but I want to...
Let's go, if I could, to Doug's point, do we, Rick, do we offer tuition reimbursement?
For the police department?
Yeah, for the police department.
Police department does through contract.
Through contract. And we, you know, we've done it with, we, like you said, we did it with Megan, and we do pay for other training.
But you get two different groups of employees, in a sense. You have salaried employees and you have hourly employees. And you have, salary employees are hired on with a employment contract and...
and can negotiate different aspects of it.
Sometimes.
An employment agreement we use, yeah.
Okay, but...
I mean, the language contract has a...
So do we.
In the business world, right, wrong or indifferent, in the business world, you're not rewarded for your degrees and the effort toward those degrees until the degree has been obtained.
Right, I understand that.
But I want to go along with Doug on this one, because I felt uncomfortable about it as well. And the person in this position has a great deal of responsibility. They're bonded, they're handling the town's money in some way, shape, or form. And part of... And I thought Megan did an excellent job of talking about what the needs are in that position and how that could help her by allowing her to shift off some more work to this particular position and help free up Megan to do some more important things. And I want to point out... Yeah, I want to point out, too, that we did that in the library budget. We did it a little differently. And then Ben asked for an increase. He didn't ask for a pay increase for the people, but he did ask for an increase in the number of hours for the part-time assistants. And the stated purpose of that was to allow him more time to concentrate on what he needed to concentrate on with the library project coming up and things of that nature. And so I'm sort of coming down here saying that this is the same... Let me finish. This is the same sort of situation here, where we have a talented employee at the head of the department who needs a little bit more time. And in this case, we can't give any more hours, because it would be overtime. But we could do something to help push off some of that work.
If I could, didn't we change the organizational structure so that we now have a full-time administrative assistant in the finance group? We moved somebody that was splitting twenty hours to a full-time...
On paper, we did, but the de facto was that was happening anyway.
But we did so that that particular piece... My other concern is equity amongst the entire organization.
Right.
That's what we talked about last night.
You have other people in the department and other department managers that have made a claim or had been proponents of increasing their employees for similar type activity, you could say, or similar additional responsibilities. And you need to be consistent across the board.
If I might, getting to your point, Jeff, it sounded like a direction you were going. I don't know if that is the direction you're going. But instead of talking about an employee, if what we were talking about was having a fund for a college stipend for people to apply for, and it could be that employee or another employee, if there was an amount of money that was available to everybody...
To me, that would be a fair and equitable thing if you provided a form of tuition reimbursement.
Right.
We touched on that last night, as far as having guidelines as to what you'd have to have to qualify for it.
If you put an amount of money in there, and then I can come back with potential guidelines for you to adopt. And, you know, what we used with Megan, I think, was you bring back, you know, you have to successfully complete your courses with a certain grade level and, you know...
So that stuff's all part of a tuition reimbursement plan.
Right, yeah.
Do we have any idea how many other people that that might affect, based on doing it for one and not necessarily doing it for others?
Don't know, I, you know...
Certainly, it would have to be job-related.
Well, I'm just...
Well, I think Rick's saying it would be available to everybody.
It would be available to people that were trying to obtain a degree in a relevant field to their current position.
So how many people that aren't here tonight and aren't being lobbied for, will there be showing up tomorrow morning saying, "Hey, by the way, I've got something that I'd like to have more for"? That's what I'm asking. I don't necessarily disagree with what we're doing, but what's the bigger picture of what the effects might be on this budget?
I can't say that I know, you know, I have a...
I'm just raising a question, because...
Yeah, well, it's a good question, and I think, you know, if you think about the town's structure, a lot of the training that's done by the town, or at least some of it, is provided by M&amp;A as part of our dues. Certainly, I think the GA training fell into that. There was no expense for that training.
What about the assessor? The town paid for that? The town paid for hers?
Yeah.
So the town paid for her, for the SS? Why didn't somebody bring that up?
But it was all...
It was probably in the training line, as opposed to tuition reimbursement line.
At one point, the planning office paid for Melody's up until she had gotten done, or however that worked out, so...
But if you had a set amount of money, and, you know, that's what we do with PD. PD has a set amount of money that they...
But that's written up in their contract. There's a document they go by, which tells them how they can or...
But then, no matter what the employee... I mean, my gut feeling would be, I think some of the library staff would probably take advantage of that. They'd be the next people to do it, and maybe some people in the town office.
Well, the way you structure it, though, again, I mean, this, you know, this fund could be set up for people that are pursuing a college degree. You know, this isn't just for, you know...
Right, it's tuition reimbursement. So it was not just a training.
No, it's not training, it's tuition reimbursement.
It's very specific in that it is going toward a college-accredited college degree related to the field that you are currently in, or one that you may be in as part of municipal government. You apply for it each semester that you take the course. You have to get a certain grade point average and turn in your grades before you get reimbursed. And then the town reimburses at fifty percent, or whatever the number might be. It's a way to recognize, it's a way to help support, to Doug's point, help support people advancing their career. It's a way to be equitable to anybody that so chooses to do this across the board. And I think it addresses all the concerns that we've all brought up as a good answer to...
And what happens when you have more people applying than you have funds?
Then...
I'm not being negative, I'm just asking the question.
Then the town manager has to come and to the slugboard and say, "Hey, I need some more money."
So I'm... Or there's a, you know, the, I mean, you could have the, you could have a grant surveillable not to exceed.
Right.
Well, I... Part of the police departments was they don't get any money until they show the certificate, which is similar to what we're doing with other employees. So to do it ahead of time, I'm still having a problem with it.
It would not be ahead of time, you would have to take the course.
You put a fund in the budget.
Yeah.
In fact, the fund would probably live in the town manager's budget or the administration budget, not a particular department.
What's that line? Employee training and education line?
No, I would suggest...
Yeah, I would call it tuition reimbursement as differentiating from training, because the training that...
Separate line.
Right. And like I say, I would put it under the...
The town manager's budget.
Town manager's budget or the administration budget, either one. And then there's a pool of money there that the town manager has available, and maybe nobody applies for it, and it acts a little bit like a reserve one, I suppose, and...
I think you will get, you know, I think you'll get employees that will.
Well, it's, again, you set, you know, again, I'm thinking of this for college, you know?
Right, it's all it is for.
I think that's all it's for, yes.
Yeah, and accredited degree program, not just taking a course for the sake of taking the course, but, you know, courses toward an accredited degree that's relevant to you for the job.
We can pull all that stuff, the guidelines toward tuition reimbursement, there's hundreds of examples that...
There are two different levels in the police department. One is for, I think, associates, and one's for the BA. There's different dollar values that you get yearly, I think, based on that.
Well, we could probably look at that as a first crack at a policy, too.
This would be, if it exists, somebody's taking a three-credit course toward the degree. The three-credit course costs, pick a number, fifteen hundred dollars. The tuition reimbursement plan brought to the town is at some level, some percentage of that. Once that course is taken, the grade hits the minimum bogey for grade, a check is cut, and have a nice day, take your next course.
I think in, you know, Megan's case, I mean, the amount that you get reimbursed for does not even come close to what you spent in your...
It paid for two of my eight classes a year.
Yeah, so it's...
It's something. I mean, it's something.
Well, and I've seen, and I've been in organizations for tuition reimbursement you didn't get, and I'm not advocating this, but I'm just saying, I've been in ones where, in, I've worked for corporations where you didn't get the tuition reimbursement until after you got the degree. So I'm just saying what we're suggesting, I'm not advocating that. I'm saying that we're being more generous than some corporations out there are, large corporations.
Well, let me float this out here, just to see how it rises up the flagpole. We had, in last year's budget, we had a college stipend in the finance department for three thousand dollars, and that was per Megan's employment agreement. What if we set up a fund of three thousand dollars and put it in the town manager's budget for tuition reimbursement and a new line, and then task the town manager to come up with a procedure to disperse that?
We'll bring that back to you.
I would make it five, yeah.
I'd make it five.
I'm okay with that, I just picked the three, because it was there, but I think five is fine.
But three is going to cover one person, maybe.
Yeah.
Five would get a chance to cover two.
Well, it depends on what you... I mean, if I, and I don't, if I remember correctly, I think the police department was two fifty and five hundred. But I don't know what the...
I don't remember.
I don't know what the latest contract...
They got that every year.
True, but you don't get it until...
So they work ten years.
And that's a negotiated contract, right?
Yeah.
Labor contract, so...
Well, I'm okay with the five thousand. In fact, I was going to suggest that first, but I didn't know. Didn't want to test those borders.
I'd like to have, sorry, I'd like to have Rick use the model that the police use for dollar figures to work with.
Well, they...
I think it's a different animal.
Right, it's a different animal.
Well, we're treating the employees the same as we do them, because there's a lot of reasons for that.
I mean, I think right now, if, all we really have to decide right now is, we want to put a budget line in there now. And Rick's going to come back to us with a plan for that. And I think looking at what the police department does now is certainly a good start, see where we go from there.
We can share tuition reimbursement plan generalities from many companies.
Yeah, it's not municipal, it's not difficult.
It's half a dozen criteria, and you go.
Would you rather have more in there if you came up with five thousand out of the budget somewhere else that you supported?
More where?
Well, I don't know. I'm just thinking about it. To tell you the truth, I would support this program over maybe cutting a little bit of that overtime that Mark keeps talking about.
Oh, yeah, I mean, so...
Well, I...
It's fifty-five hundred, you could...
You put five thousand in the budget, the town manager has to manage to a number anyway. And it's going to have to, if it went over, it's going to have to come out of something else.
If it goes over, well, you can't. I mean, with the tuition reimbursement?
Yeah.
It's discretionary. You got five thousand, you got five thousand, that's it.
First come, first served.
Yeah, first come, first served.
If you put a cap on it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that's what we're doing.
The policy could state something like, "You can't exceed the fund if you have many applications, and the reimbursement rate may be a little low," or something like that.
All I'm saying is that, maybe it's a bad idea, nobody supports it, but I could see putting ten thousand dollars in for that and taking five thousand dollars out of that overtime, which I think was a little more than was necessary in that budget item, so, whatever.
Well, I think the five thousand is a good number.
I like the ten thousand.
Well, I'd like to be able to...
This is year one. Yeah, that's my point there.
And it is sort of a reserve, yeah, but it gets it going, you know?
I'd like to be able to call it a wash, finding that five somewhere else. It's just a thought. It's just like having a dollar or having...
I'll give you a chestnut mare for that stallion there.
What's that famous name, McWhat?
Well, I'm okay with adding the five thousand in a tuition reimbursement line.
Let's go with it.
Okay.
Doug?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
I think that's a good thing for the town.
There again, I'm forgotten already.
Okay. So if we add that, that bumps our expense number up.
Five thousand dollars, doesn't it?
Yeah, just usually the way that works. So that's six thousand, two hundred and, or three hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Do we want to make any other changes to the budget?
Six million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Right. Or do we want to pass it off to the budget committee?
The budget committee is going to go right after this stuff, penny by penny, and a hundred dollars by a hundred dollars.
Not as I can help it.
My experience in the past with the budget committee is they usually come back, and you've been on it for a long time, Tom. Usually, the budget committee comes back with two or three items that they feel strongly about, that they say, you know, we...
We look at big overarching stuff.
Yeah. We really would like you to, which is to cut the overtime, just to use Mark's thing, you know? Maybe the budget committee comes back and says, "We really think that overtime number is too big. We want to cut it down a little bit." But that's been my experience with the budget committees, that they don't come back with, you know, a voluminous change in the budget. And they've been here through the whole process and had input, so, I mean, that could all change this year. It could be totally different. I don't know, if you get some new members on the budget committee, they may have different ideas, but...
Yeah, I think Tom has a pretty good idea of our commitment to a bond, just to kind of get ourselves out of the hole.
Will you give some guidance on that, Tom?
Okay, you're the chairman, so they have to listen to you for at least a little bit.
No, but...
Could you guys talk...
They can play along.
Could you guys talk to me a little bit about that columbarium, again, the twenty thousand? I just got a little lost in that process, and maybe it's because I'm new to the budgeting. But I remember you were pushing, you know, for the twenty... I'm going back two weeks ago. Okay, so you were pushing for the twenty thousand dollars, you know, for the columbarium to put that back in, and that reserve. And the financial guys over here, the new budget committee guys, were saying, "Well, you know..." I mean, I had some conversation with them in between during break. They said, "Frankly, we just kind of forgot to give you guys some money out of the trust fund last year." And so they went back and they doubled it. And the comment that was made to us at one point was, "Now you have money to offset that reserve." And so, did we offset that reserve with that money? Or why is the colum... I mean, I get putting twenty thousand into the columbarium reserve, but I thought that was supposed to be offset by that extra, by that trust fund money.
Well, partially offset.
Well, yeah, 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 not fully, it's not, doesn't come to twenty thousand. But, I mean, right now, I think it's a twenty thousand impact to the budget, is it not?
Well, it's...
Oh, so we are counting it?
Well... Fifteen thousand dollars in revenue was a seventy-five hundred dollar increase. So we added seventy-five hundred dollars in revenue, and we also added twenty thousand in expense. So from the manager's budget, that's a net impact of twelve-five, right?
I thought she just said five thousand.
Well, she was looking at the fifteen thousand number, the total.
I told you I was lost.
What number do you want it to be, Doug?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I'm just lost.
Go ahead, Megan.
You could consider, too, if you're confident that you're going to put it in an infrastructure bond, then why allocate the twenty thousand to the reserve this year? If you're confident that you're going to proceed with an infrastructure bond, and that's going to be an item on your infrastructure loan.
What are you looking for?
Well, I think the answer is, because we aren't a hundred percent confident...
Well, the only question would be, and I got to look back at the reserve fund, and maybe, Linda, you can help. I don't know where we are with the reserve fund for that right now.
We've put twenty thousand in so far.
Well, that's right, you wouldn't have to use the whole amount in the bond. You could just use whatever you needed to get you up to...
At the end of this year, there'll be twenty-three thousand five sixty.
Okay. So the question I was going to have is, if the twenty thousand would get us to the point where we could actually go out and buy it, then that would be an argument against using the bond, because we'd be able to... Soon as the bond money would become available, would be next spring. If the twenty thousand were going to put us over the top and we could actually go buy it, then that would be an argument against it, but otherwise...
It's on sixty-three, actually.
I sort of, don't get me wrong, I support the columbarium, I think it's a great idea. I just, I... And I wasn't even really suggesting that we take that out. I just wanted to make sure that we were, that I understood this whole trust, you know, the money coming out of the trust funding, and if that was being, sort of offsetting that twenty thousand.
Not totally.
The real purpose of the trust fund, while it offsets the whole cemetery budget, it's really there to pay for mowing, brush cutting, grave repair. Like, it's not really supposed to be used for... While it doesn't necessarily allocate it directly to the columbarium, to the reserve account, that's what that money is really supposed to be used for.
It's the perpetual care, I think, is when somebody buys a plot, you know? You pay for the plot, then you pay a money for some amount of perpetual care that goes into the investment accounts, and then that also throws off this, these earnings.
And this, you know, is a thought that could be gone in five seconds, so that's why I'm asking it now.
Quick.
You know, and I understand, and I'm going back to the reserves, the UFB, and the usage of it. And I understand not putting the hundred thousand in for the walker, because that is a big ticket, and you could take that out in the bond. Are there some smaller little hanging fruit that we could possibly dip in for a less, a number, just to clean up the small stuff? I mean, I'm just going back to, I want to get the thing cleaned up.
Well...
I mean, we could put everything on the list in the bond, but then you're going to have such a large number. I mean, if there are half a dozen...
Well, I think what would have, for me, would have to be something, would have to be something that was small enough so we couldn't increase things very much. It would also have to be something... It'd also have to be something that was fairly urgent. Because the issue with the bond is if we... If this select board or the new select board decides to put together a bond, it'll go to vote in November and won't be available until the spring of 2020. So this would be for something that we want to get done before that.
To me, I think we ought to fall back on the capital improvement plan, or at least the process.
Right, right.
And have the capital improvement committee come to us with priority one, two, three, four, five, and just list them with the dollar sign beside it, and then we can make a call on that.
For the bond, you mean?
For... Well, either for the little stuff that we might want to put back in.
Yeah, we gotta do that now, though, so...
But that's the other problem, is the timing.
I mean, there's some small dollars, relatively small dollar things in there that...
Then you look and say, "All right, the things that were cut out," which, you know, there was an original need there at some point for some of the things that we peeled.
And some of the things that was mentioned, you asked at every department head, are you happy with what's been in...
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm looking down this capital improvement plan here right now, and there's only... There's one thing that sticks out as a priority one that's urgent in this year, and that's the public works exhaust removal.
Right.
And that's in the budget.
And that was originally in the budget, right?
You guys put it back in the budget.
We did put it back in? Okay.
You did?
So, I mean...
Yeah. I don't remember we did that. I mean, I think it was a good...
No, I'm sorry, you did the sand salt shed.
No, we did the sand salt shed.
Yeah, right, we didn't.
So, I mean, that's a $30,000 thing you could get.
What page is that, you guys?
Uh, the Public Works is 202.
Yeah, that one has always bothered me.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, there's one thing that's number one, which is 30. So, yeah, okay, let's take 30 out and take care of that and knock it off that list of how many?
Trying to find where that is in the...
It's down below the sand salt shed in the capital.
Exhaust removal, 30,000.
That is... That does push us further over LD1.
Yeah, no, no, I wouldn't... I mean, are we talking about taking out columbarium because we would be putting it in the bond? And so then we've just... We've just made room for 20,000? I mean, is that... I'm not... I am not supportive of going farther over LD1 than we are.
I'm kind of there myself, because I can comfortably explain... I can comfortably explain the 104 for the bond for the library being... And that plus our increases being 5.4%.
But let me jump in here. If we put this project back in and take the money from the UFB, then it's a net zero on the budget.
Correct.
So there's no impact at LD1.
The 30,000? Yeah, but I...
But we eroded 30,000 off the UFB.
Right, that's right.
I'm not into that anymore.
We're already trying... We're already making a conscious decision to drop it by five days now.
Okay, it was just a thought. I mean, I'm all right staying where we are, but I'm still trying to pick away at...
I mean, I think that... But doing that, and that's the one project that jumps out as I just looked at, that jumped out at me saying, "Gee, we could do that if we were willing to dip into the UFB to do it." And that's what Mark had asked, is are there some things we can pick off in the UFB? And so that's the question of...
To me... Sorry, Ken, but to me, that's more important than doing the columbarium. And especially if the columbarium is something that goes into the bond. And I would rather do the exhaust, which I felt not comfortable about.
So to get...
I know there's a $10,000 difference between the two.
So to get to exactly 55 days worth of expenses, you could take a little over $160,000 from the unassigned fund balance. If you dropped out the $20,000 for the cemetery reserve, increased the UFB by 10,000, and put the 30,000 in for the exhaust system, it wouldn't make... Wouldn't have an impact on the bottom line of the budget.
So moved.
161, 911, I think.
Is 30,000 or 35? For some reason, I had in my head 30,000.
I'm good, I count. 30,000. So that would be remove the 20,000 in the cemetery reserve with the idea...
With the commitment to put it in the bond.
With the idea that it's gonna go in the bond. And I'm actually... If the bond is a good thing, I'm okay with that because of the fact that the 20,000 doesn't get us there this year anyway.
We gotta wrap our heads around the fact that it's gonna take a bond that we've gotta put together in the next however many months to move the town forward in a significant way. Because if... We're not gonna be able to move it forward doing some of this stuff. I mean, like I say, you have $100,000 project, you just popped LD1.
And we all... To state the obvious, I mean, this is health and safety of our employees. And that's more important, not to me at this point.
Well, I'm okay with that.
The way I'm at it...
So the moves then in the budget would be to remove the 20,000 for the cemetery reserve, to add in the 30,000 for the exhaust system at the public works, and to take another 10,000 from the UFB. Does that...
That works.
That's a win-win.
Yeah, but that works.
So the net impact... The impact on the net budget is... Is zero, but the expense and revenues change a little bit.
Yeah, I'll give you the new numbers.
We just dropped 10,000 in our UFB.
Right. Ready for another topic? I was ready to go home, but whatever.
Yeah, we got one more, 'cause actually I'd forgotten it. I don't think I forgot it. I think I sort of blanked it out. But today, I received a tongue lashing from Dave Jackson...
Oh, you too?
Over the... Yeah, me, too, I know. Over the park benches. And I explained to him what the rationale was. You know, it just made sense to, you know, have an advertising campaign. And once people are identified, then they would pay us and move forward. And then he proceeded to tell me how that doesn't work. You know, the way it works in Camden is you put a couple of benches out. It gets people's attention and they say, "Hey, I want that for mom," or "I want that for granddad." And then they pay their money and get their little bronze plaque affixed to it. So, you know, is it possible to get a couple of benches and then add a revenue line for what we think we could get for them? You know, is it a gamble? I don't know.
It's a gamble on the revenue side, right?
Yeah, sure, sure. Then I could say to Dave, "I told you so."
Well, in last night... Last night, I tried to get a couple. And that was part of what Dave, in the parks... Yeah, 'cause I wasn't going for the whole 11, but I figured... 'Cause his number with the weather end ones are 2,400 apiece, I think.
Yeah.
And that's the cost of purchase?
The cost of purchase.
Correct.
And they sell them for eight.
And they sell them for eight. And that's a number that he has been successful with in Camden. And they get their little plaque and they put it on there in memory of whomever, whatever. And, you know, I... I'm all right with that.
I think the Parks Committee's feeling a little bit bruised over...
Well, I mean, and I'm okay with the program, but the problem is if we put a $2,400 expense and an $8,000 revenue in here, it doesn't happen. And we're stuck for the...
Or you just put 2,400 in for the bench, no revenue, and it's upside.
Well, let's look at the... I mean, I don't want to bring up the 110 we're supposed to give from the state either, but, you know, we're on the good faith thing that that's gonna happen, too. You know? So, you know, I mean, 8,000 or 110?
That's like a lot of money.
No, I would rather do something that we know we can take to the bank in the budgeting process. If we say we're gonna do one bench or two, it shows up in the expense. We don't budget any revenue for it, and the revenue is upside.
Well, two would be nice, because I think it could replace the two that are in Mary Lee Park that are pretty ratty.
All right, and...
Is a start.
And the next question is, are you gonna go find $5,000 in the current budget to peel out in order to cover it?
Yes. Didn't we talk about taking the 5,000 out of the overtime?
Never benches.
Tom?
Remember security for the benches so they don't vanish.
Yeah, it works in Camden, apparently, in the amphitheater and everything. They put them in concrete blocks and bolt them down, so...
If it's one of those benches... Mike and I moved one of them that it took everything I had with Mike to pick one of them up. They are heavy things.
I mean, this apparently is a very well-thought-out program up in Camden, you know?
I don't... Mr. Chairman, I don't have strong feelings one way or another.
I mean, I would side with Doug, 'cause I tried to get two last night, and there wasn't much feeling for it.
I'm okay with doing it, I'm just not sure if I agree with not putting in revenue or whatever. I'm not sure I agree with the mechanics. I'm okay with a couple benches.
I would get... I would say one. And my reasoning behind that, you put in the expense for one, 2,400. If you sell it, then you got money you can buy another one.
It's upside.
Right.
Well, and that...
And then you can use that money to buy another one.
And that's what Dave had been saying...
That's a good solution.
That's what Dave had been saying at the meetings. Once you get the... Once you do the seed of a couple of benches and you start selling them, then that's your money to buy more.
But you don't think we can put any revenue in there to offset it? Can't we put in 2,400 in revenue?
Buy two and put in 2,400?
Who's gonna be the bench salesman?
From a bookkeeping perspective, that doesn't work.
That's up to them. And they're... I think they're eager to do something like that, listening to the group.
So that's the horse trading right there? We'll put a bench in, you sell it.
Put two benches in and you sell at least one.
Well, I think if you put one in and sell it, then you got money to buy it. Sell it for 8,000.
Yeah, but you put two in and it, you know... It's not just like one bench there. You put two in Mary Lee Park.
You have to choose the place you put it judicially. I have great confidence in the Parks Committee.
What's our budget committee think, one or two?
Symmetric one is nice.
There we go.
Can you put it... Can you put it... Okay, let's just use round numbers. Can you buy two? Say, let's just say you put in an expense for 5,000, right? On the theory that they're gonna sell it for more, but we want to be conservative, can't we just put a revenue in for 5,000 so that it's just a wash in the budget?
You could, so long as they sell it. I mean, you're gonna already have the expense, so if you don't collect the revenue...
Right. If they just sell one, they're gonna exceed the 5,000 of revenue. And our budget stays unaffected.
But I would suggest some sort of policy or something so that the extra money doesn't roll into the UFB, that it's put into reserves.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Yeah, that's key, and that we would have to somehow, hopefully, set up some sort of a reserve account for the...
Well, when the revenue came in, you... Well, you wanna do, just go buy another one.
You can allocate the expense of the bench to the revenue, which will then balance the budget, and then allocate whatever percentage over that to the reserve account. And we can do that when we process the payment.
And I think I asked you that question one day when we were... David, we were having our meeting out in the back room, I think I went...
Jeff?
I was just gonna opine that setting two benches and coming in 5,000 and then matching that on the revenue when you're really looking for 1,600 is all of a sudden taking a budget...
Which tries really, really hard to have totally accurate numbers and skewing the numbers on the revenue side.
I mean, you're looking for 16,000.
Yeah, it doesn't feel right. Plus, you can point to it and say each of those benches are eight, as opposed to you point to it and say each of those benches are 25, in terms of looking at the revenue. So from a gut reaction, it just feels as though...
Well, I just feel like... I don't... I think I have more concern about putting in... If you put in five for the expense and you put in 16,000 of revenue, then we're really screwed. We, you know, if we don't get it and we don't sell any. And I think that we're not, you know, but we... You may not have support to do that. But if you put in 5,000 of the expense and you just say 5,000 revenue, and you... And they're wildly successful and they, you know, they sell it, then what's the harm? Just to get the program started. And then next year, you count, you know, for it really based on how many...
Well, once the pilot ones are there, then you tell the people, "Okay, when you tell us you want the bench, then we'll buy it."
Right, exactly, exactly.
But it still does, it's still... Well, okay.
All right, so what do we want to do?
I suggest we do 5,000 for two benches and expense and 5,000 on the revenue side, just to get the program started.
And paying for it, how? You're doing it as a revenue side.
Doing it on the revenue side.
I was giving you the chance at the overtime again.
You know?
Oh, 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 oh. It's on the... No, it's a wash.
It's a wash.
Actually, you said 55,000 for the benches, so...
Yeah, they're good benches.
So we're gonna put them everywhere.
Did I say 55,000?
So should we put in... The benches are 2,400 each, should we be... To be precise, should we put in the 4,800?
Yeah, whatever.
4,800 on each and on the revenue side.